You're listening to Good Morning Gwinnett, a division of Noise Media Network. Hosted by Audrey Bell Kearney. Sharing stories about people and places around beautiful Gwinnett County and beyond. Monday through Thursday at 10 a.m. Southern Living at its best.
Good morning, good morning, good morning, all my Gwinetians out there in Gwinnett land and all of you around the world. All my friends around the world. Hope you're having a beautiful morning. It is a beautiful day here in Gwinnett County. Right now it's eighty-five degrees, but listen y'all, it's gonna be hot to death. You hear me? It's going up to a high of ninety-nine. Yes, one degrees from one hundred. I'm sure that one degrees is, that one degrees that's missing is still gonna feel like one hundred. So it's gonna be hot today and I got, ooh, I got back to back meetings and I'm not gonna complain because somewhere it's not this hot. So it's gonna be a beautiful day here in Gwinnett County. Listen, I'm sure there's a heat advisory for everybody. Please, 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 whatever you do, people, whatever you do, whatever you do, people, whatever you do, do not go in the store and leave your kids or pets in the car. It is too hot. I don't care if you're not going there for thirty seconds, don't do it. It's so hot. And because you know you don't want anybody to take the kids or take the pets, you're gonna roll the window up. It is hot. I get in my car right now, I guarantee you, if I go out there and get in my car and when it's ninety-nine degrees, it's gonna say a hundred and ten in the car. Because last week I wanna say it was ninety-three. When I got inside my car, it said a hundred and four degrees. So it, and it easily get, because it's so hot, soon as you roll the window up and cut the A.C. off, it easily, it easily get really, really hot. So please, y'all, please don't leave elderly people in the car, don't leave children in the car, don't leave your pets in the car. I get it, but don't leave them in there with the, don't leave kids in the car at all. Don't leave your pets in the car at all. Now, if you're gonna leave an elderly person in the car, just make sure the air conditioning is on. Make sure the A.C. is full blast because it's hot, a hundred degrees is hot. Eighty-five degrees is hot with the windows rolled off and the air turned on, turned off. So make sure, y'all, because you know, I heard, I read a story last week, and I normally don't like to talk about these stories because they're really depressing to tell you the truth. But the girl went into the store to go shopping and she leaves the baby in the car. Why? Why, why, it's hot? Listen, Georgia is hot this time of the year and, and they have said that it's even hotter for some strange reasons than it normally is. So do not leave your kids in the car. Like, why does that, I don't understand why that doesn't just snap with people. Anyway, it's a beautiful day here in Gwinnett County. The weather is hot and, and, and you guys be careful out there. I'm sure there's a heat index, uh, advisory, heat warning, especially if you have breathing conditions like asthma, because you know, I know a lot of people with asthma. Whenever it's really hot or it's high pollen, their allergies kick in, asthma, they have attacks. Make sure you got your EpiPen with you wherever you go, your antihistamines, so you can make sure that you're protected, okay? Okay. Alright, today is National Chocolate Eclair Day. Alright, listen, if you like chocolate eclairs, knock yourself out. It's National Chocolate Eclair Day. It's also National HVAC Tech Day. Thank God for the HVAC technicians, baby, because if we didn't have them, oh my God, ninety-nine degrees, we would just be burning. Last year, my air conditioning went out and went out, I was, I was ticked because we, we're supposed to have one of these smart systems. The system is not so smart. Let me just say that. We got the smart door, the smart door system is pretty good. The smart A.C. system and heating system, not so good. But anyway, the, the A.C. went out last year, oh my God, for like three days. My house, the thermostats in the house was a hundred degrees in the house. So it was like trying to sleep in the car. It was so hot. And so I'm on the phone with the tech guy like, look, y'all gonna have to do something. So he could see the thermostat from the office because it's a smart house. He said, oh my God, your, the temperature in your house is a hundred degrees. Like, sir, who you telling? I'm living in this. So anyway, thank God for all HVAC techni, HVAC technicians out there. It's your day. We appreciate, if nobody has told you today, um, HVAC technician, listen, I appreciate you. So I'm speaking for the rest of us who love air conditioning and heat. We appreciate you, even if they don't tell you very often. I'm saying it for all of us. We appreciate you. Yes, we do. It's National Onion Rings Day, so if you like onion rings, go out there and get you a nice, I don't know where to get good onion rings from. I really don't. Like I, I, I don't think I've ever went to a restaurant anywhere, ordered onion rings, ever. My husband likes onion rings, so if he orders onion rings, I eat off his, but I've never, and I, I'll eat onion, I eat onions almost every day. I probably smell like an onion right now, um, because I eat it so much. My uncle tells, my, my, my uncle said, you like onions, don't you? I was like, yeah, I do. You know, I eat onions in almost everything, like cheese. But, but I've never ordered, I don't think I've ever gone to a place and said, let me get a order of, a order of onion rings. I don't think, I can't recall because I'm just not an onion rings kind of person. However, if he gets them, which he normally gets onion rings, if there's a choice between french fries and onion rings, he's gonna always pick onion rings, which is weird. Then I eat some of his onion rings. I'm like, oh, those are good. Now, mind you, they taste good, but I just never order them. Alright, it's National Kissing Day. Yes, listen here, it's National Kissing Day. Don't just go around kissing on folks, though. Don't listen, don't just be putting your mouth on people because it's National Kissing Day. You kiss people that you know wanna be kissed by you. I'm just saying, don't be kissing the wrong person and don't be kissing people because it's National Kissing Day, just because you wanna kiss that person. Alright, I know what you, listen, I'm reading some of you, some of your minds right now. Oh, it's National Kissing Day? I'm just gonna tell them it's National Kissing Day. Uh-uh, don't kiss them on the cheek, don't kiss them on the hand, don't kiss them nowhere, because you know you're not supposed to be kissing that person. I don't care if it is National Kissing Day. I get it, that's an excuse. It's National kissing, just like standing under the mistletoe. Yeah, you standing under with the wrong person. Listen, don't do it. I know it's National Kiss Your Kids. If you wanna kiss somebody, kiss your spouse. Kiss, kiss your mama, kiss your daddy. You might even wanna kiss your uncle, but don't kiss nobody else you shouldn't be kissing. I'm just saying now, I'm trying to keep you out of trouble. Alright, let's go ahead and get on these Horoscopes brought to you by Notary Astral, Michael Thasson, for the day Wednesday, June the twenty-seventh. Baby, you have made it to the middle. It is hump day. You have made it to the middle. I know somebody saying, why, it's hump day? Yes, you got two more, yeah, what, you got two more days in the wake up? Yes, no, you got one more day in the wake up, one more day in the wake up and it'll be Friday. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's hump day, you've made it to the middle, you're almost there, you're almost to the weekend. I know some people saying, thank God, it's been a long three days, because I know it's only been three days for some of you. Somebody thought Monday was long. Anyway, you, you're almost there, you're almost there. Alright, let's get in, get in, kick off these Horoscopes brought to you by Notary Astral, Michael Thasson. We're gonna kick it off like we always do and that is with Aries. Don't prejudge. You may get drawn into a personal situation that would not be to your liking. You could have trouble persuading others to accept your ideas and opinions. An older member of your family may have you left, may have you left, may have left you with a pressing situation. Alright, listen, you could have trouble persuading others to accept your ideas and opinions. And here's the thing, unless it's ideas and, and opinions that's pertaining to those people, you don't need their permission. You don't need to persuade them. What you need to do is take action, right? Yes, it's nice to have people on your side. Yes, it's nice to have people in your corner, but sometimes you're not gonna have them. That being said, you don't let that hold you back. You keep moving, whether you persuade them or not, if it's something that's really important to you and it's, and you need to get it done, get it done. Whether they support you or not, you, so you don't have to persuade them. Keep moving. Taurus, get involved in creative groups. Spend time with your lover today. Try not to be honest, try to be honest, I said not to be, try to be honest when dealing with your mate. Alright, listen, after you come from the creative group, you gotta spend some time with that special person in your life and try to be honest, right? I know it's hard talking to them sometimes and you're afraid if you be honest, you're gonna hurt their feelings. But sometimes the truth is the truth and it needs to be heard. So instead of trying to sugarcoat it, bend the truth, spin the truth, just tell the truth, you know? And I, me personally, I don't need your line, I mean, tell me the truth. Yes, I need to know the truth because I, the only way I can fix me is if I know the truth. Now, if it's a truth about you that you think is gonna be a problem, then you're gonna have to fix that. And you're gonna have to deal with the fallout if it pertains to me and the truth, right? Because here's the thing, if it's so, if it's something that you've done that you know you shouldn't have, you feel like you need to come clean, come clean. But be prepared, be prepared for the outcome. That's all I'm saying. Just be prepared for the outcome because you never know how that's gonna go. But the truth, you know, I'm, tell me the truth. Gemini, trips will be exciting. Controversial subjects should be avoided at all costs. You will be able to communicate well today. Alright, listen, you're gonna have some exciting trips and on those trips, just leave the controversy where it is. Avoid it, you don't want that to mess up, mess up the trip. You wanna have a good time. The minute you start talking about things like politics and religion and people, folks, families, that's gonna be a problem. So just leave that stuff right where it is and have a good time on this trip. It's gonna be exciting, not, but listen, if you start talking about crack that's gonna mess up the trip, just know that it won't be fun anymore, okay? Cancer, make your intentions perfectly clear and find out exactly what is expected of you. Don't let your boss make you feel guilty enough to take work home with you. Hard work will bring rewards. Listen, make your intentions perfectly clear, right? That way, people don't have to try to read your mind, Cancer. They can't read your mind, so stop complaining and whining. Make your, listen, make your intentions perfectly clear, because here's the thing, once your intentions are made perfectly clear, there's no way they can say, I didn't know. Now, if you're sitting there thinking, I wouldn't do that, they don't know that. They don't, because you think you wouldn't do it, that does not mean that they wouldn't do it. And here's the thing, they may not even know it's a problem because they don't even know what it is you expect. You know what I'm saying? Or you need to let them know what your intentions are so they can let you know what they expect of you. They can't read your mind, Cancer, just know that. Leo, be into, be innovative. Entertainment should include the whole family or a lot of your friends. You may have to explain your actions to your families. Okay, be innovative, I love innovation. Be innovative today, Leo. What does that mean? I don't know for you. It could be innovative at your job, could have been innovative in your business, heck, it should be, it could be innovative in your family, right? Because you gotta explain something to the family today and then entertainment, have a good time, enjoy the family and friends. Bring them all over. Yes, come over, it's Wednesday night hump day, we're gonna have a hump day, get, get together. Yes, pizza, yes, some spades, y'all know I like to play spades. I'm going to my brother's house for the Fourth of July and I said to him yesterday, do you have a card table? Because you know I like playing spades. He can play spades too. We used to, we used to play spades, we used to do all that stuff together. My brother and I, we're real close. And so I said to him, you got a spades table? He was like, no, but I'm gonna get one. It's like great, because you know I wanna play spades. So, and I got people that's trash talkers that I'm looking forward to having them come by, um, and talk some trash, talk some trash. Virgo, romantic encounters will develop through colleagues. Passion is inevitable and commitments can be made during the heat of the night. Consider starting a small business on the side. Look for a marketable gimmick. Now, here's the thing, I'm gonna say this, I'm gonna say this. Look for a business, don't look for a marketable gimmick because gimmicks end. Unless you're trying to make some quick money, it's nothing long-term, okay, maybe a gimmick. But for the most part, a small business, now, let me just say this, both are gonna take some work. If you're planning on having, building something that's sustainable over a long period of time, which is a small business, that's gonna take even more work. If you're looking for a gimmick, go out there, sell some cookies or something. And I'm not even saying that's a gimmick, unless you're not serious about it. Then it's a hobby where you make some side hustle money, right? So think about what that is, what that looks like for you. In the meantime, in the passion of the moment, you made some commitments that you really didn't wanna make, Virgo. Ooh, now you gotta go back and, and honor those commitments. Or what do you say? That, I said that in the heat of the moment? That's what you're gonna say? Yeah, well, you better figure out what to say soon because you done made some, right in the, in the middle, in the midst of it all. You've made some commitments, I don't know what they were. I don't know what they were, but you done made them. Alright, I'm going into a song. I'll be right back after this song to bring you more of the Horoscopes brought to you by Notary Astral, Michael Thasson, stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back. It's your girl, Audrey Bell Kearney, bringing you the Daily Horoscopes brought to you by Notary Astral, Michael Thasson. We're gonna pick it up with Libra. Make plans that will take you to exotic destinations. You must leave someone, you must not leave someone or show interest in them for the wrong reasons. Organize social events or family gatherings. Listen, make plans for that exotic destination. So I have a, I have a, um, I have a business partner. We've been, what was crazy is, right? He said to me, we've been business partners for twenty-five years. And I was like, twenty-five? I had no idea. And, and what was even more crazy, um, he ran for president in, of Liberia. So when I met him, God, that's a long time. He said twenty-five years, I'm still thinking, was it twenty-five years? I don't think it was twenty-five years. I think it was more like nineteen years, maybe nineteen. I don't need, I can't even remember. It had, well, it may be closer to twenty-two, it's been a long time, but I'm thinking maybe it was closer to twenty, twenty-two years. He said twenty-five, but I think it was more like twenty-two. But anyway, I hadn't even, I didn't even realize it had, we had been friends that long. So when I met him, he was a client and he is, he was originally born in, in Liberia, Africa. And, but he lived in East Orange, New Jersey when I met him. He was a politician, go figure, I'm always in the company of a politician. And he, um, he needed help writing, writing and publishing a book. So he became my client and I helped him write and publish his book and he did that. And then, um, a few years after that, I wanna say it was two thousand and two or three. He said it was sixteen or eighteen years ago. That was a long time. I can't even, I didn't even realize it was that long. He had a client who was running for president of Liberia and he was the campaign manager. So he was leaving the States. At that time, he had moved to South Jersey. He was leaving the States to go to, to go to Liberia to work with his client who was running for president of Liberia. And so I was like, I was kinda like a, um, what was I? I guess I was like not a liaison at that point. I wasn't a liaison yet, I was a, an advisor. I was a media advisor, go figure. I've been, I'm telling you, I've been doing this for a long time. So I was a media advisor for him and his client. Well, his client came to, to the United States right before the election, which I think was in November for them as well. Came to, came to, um, no, I don't think it was November, because he got killed in November. The client came to the United States for Thanksgiving and died in a car accident. And so now he didn't have a client anymore, so he didn't have anybody, the client was, was gonna run for president. So he called me and he said to me, what do you think I should do? Do you think I should run for president of Liberia? And I was like, well, I mean, did you guys have the same views? And he said, yes. Um, does your platform look similar to his? He said, yes. And I said, go for it. So he went back to Liberia and he campaigned and he ran for president. He didn't win, but he did run. And so he stayed in Liberia for three years and he started to help them, uh, put farm, farming systems in place. Because he had been over here in the States for a long time, had learned a lot, had been educated over here. So he went over there and he helped them, uh, put farming systems in place. And so in two thousand and ten, I was supposed to go to Liberia and open up a women's business center. So he has land and he has a building in Liberia and I was supposed to go to Liberia and open up a women's business center. And I was all ready to go. I went to go get my, I had, went to go schedule my shots and I went to go, you know, I was doing all my research and, you know, I was gonna go there with him and his wife and we was gonna get this women's business center off the ground because that was one of my passions, which it still is. And right when I got ready to go, my mom got diagnosed with breast cancer. Like literally, like I was supposed to leave, I think in October or November, she got diagnosed in September. So of course I was not about to go anywhere, especially out of the country. My mom just got diagnosed with breast cancer. So I had to pump the brakes on that and get her through chemo and I did. So she was doing pretty well and I was scheduled to go again in two thousand and twelve, again. And I was like, okay, I'm ready to go get my shots and everything. And so, um, right when I got ready to go, the breast cancer came back more aggressively. So she wound up having a mastectomy and I always felt like that was a signal saying it's not time for you to go yet. And so I pumped the brakes and I did not go. So I did not go. But yesterday, and I said all that because Virgo, your, your, your horoscope says romantic encounters, um, no, not Virgo, I'm sorry, Libra. It said make plans for you to take exotic destinations. So I'm sharing this story because I got a call yesterday and my friend said, I'm going to Liberia in September. I bought the ticket and I was like, I wanna go, because I've been trying to get there forever. And so he said to me, listen, let me go over there first because I haven't been over there in a very long time. So when he told me, I think he said it had been twelve or fourteen years or something. I'm like, had it been, has it been that long? Because it didn't seem like it had been that long. I wanna say he said fourteen years, that he had not been over to Liberia. But I didn't know it had been that long. So he's going to Liberia in September and, um, we have business ventures that we've been trying to get off the ground for years. And I was like, I wanna go, so I can't go now, but just know in the near future, like once he gets there and tell me what's going on. And a lot has changed, I'm sure, since the time I was planning on going in two thousand and ten to two thousand and twelve. That's been twenty years ago, no, twelve years, ten years ago. Yeah, ten, twelve years ago. Um, I'm excited to hear what he has to say. So when I say, um, exotic destinations, that's, that's on my calendar, that has been on my calendar to visit for a long time along with Greece and Italy and Bali. So Africa, Egypt, I know Egypt is in Africa, but normally people don't say that. Egypt, Africa, Greece, Bali and Italy, those are my places. I would love to go to like some of the other places like, like the Mediterranean. Like I think Greece is part of the Mediterranean Islands or something like that. Anyway, anyway, I digress, I'm sorry, guys. Scorpio, relatives may play an important role in your personal life. You'll be looking for creative ways to make extra cash. You can make amends by taking them somewhere special. Alright, listen, check out the side hustle, baby. Look, if you, if you wanna try to make some extra cash, just go on YouTube and, and click in, search on side hustles. There's many of them. There's many side hustles, there's many work from home opportunities, there's so much stuff there. It, you, you will be totally overwhelmed with things that you can do to make some extra money. Here's the thing, you have to have time management skills. You have to learn them because that's gonna be the problem when you say, oh my God, I can't do it. That's because you can't manage your time. And I know some people like, well, I mean, I don't have, no, think about the time that you spend doing other stuff. That means you're gonna have to give up. If your time is so limited that you wanna make this extra money, you feel like you don't have the time, that means you have to give up something. Because you have time in twenty-four hours to do that extra thing. If you're only doing, going to work and taking care of kids, there's some time in there. There's some time within the twenty-four hours for you to do what you need to do, but you have to figure out how to make that time, right? You gotta give up something, either sleep or give, off the TV or the telephone, something you gotta give up, even if it's only for two hours a day. Um, and I'm sure you can, most people think they can. I don't have time, this, that and the third, blah, 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 make the time. I was telling my daughter this morning, I said, girl, I, I wear, I had three jobs at one point. I had three jobs in an Avon business. Yeah, she's like, well, who was helping you? I said, well, your nana, I will take you to school, your dad and I. And then when I wasn't picking you up, your nana would pick you up and then I would go to the second job and then I would do, I would tell Avon at the second job. Listen, your girl was a hustler, baby. I had to do what I had to do and I had to give up some stuff. Sometimes it was sleep, sometimes it was partying, because I used to like to party, you know? Sometimes it was freedom, you know, she talked about trips. I didn't take a trip, after she was born, I didn't take a trip until she was like probably fourteen years old, because I had to give up. I'd listen, I gave it all up for her and I didn't complain, I just did what I had to do. That's all I did, you know what I'm saying? So, um, sometimes you have to make the sacrifice to get the things you want in life. Sagittarius, be sure to double check the house on your way out. You may want to tell someone how you really feel and say, you may want to, it didn't say you should. Say, you may want to, Sagittarius. You may wanna take another look at the investment you're about to make and take it, listen, double, take a double look at that investment before you put your money in there because you, make sure it's the right one. I'm just saying, speaking of investments, at eleven-thirty, I'll be doing Wise Women Invest Wednesday. Um, that's what Carolyn Schumay, we're gonna be on live streaming on LinkedIn at eleven-thirty, so be sure to go to LinkedIn, follow me on LinkedIn. Um, if you wanna hear about the stock market, should you sell your stocks right now? Because the market is all over the place. That's the question we're gonna be answering, um, on Wise Women Invest Wednesday. So be sure to, be sure to check it out, um, at eleven-thirty on LinkedIn. Follow me so it'll pop up that I'm going live. Capricorn, you will be erratic and quite likely to make personal mistakes. Your diplomacy will be of utmost importance today. Sit back, yeah, listen, be diplomatic today. It's really important that you be diplomatic today. Alright, Capricorn, don't be your mouthy self, just be diplomatic, shh, be quiet. Alright, Aquarius, your nerves are frazzled. Go on business trips if at all possible. Work quietly behind the scenes. Okay, so your nerves are, your nerves are frazzled. There's a reason why. Take a minute, Aquarius, as a matter of fact, take two, pull yourself together, right? Calm your nerves, drink you some chamomile tea or something, some chai, relax. Go outside, get some sunshine. If you're out here in Georgia, it's ninety-nine degrees coming up, so don't stay out there too long. Put your feet on the ground, get grounded, calm yourself. When you are calm, you can make better decisions, okay? I know you're frazzled right now, relax, just take a minute. Alright, last but not least, my fellow fish Pisces, losses are likely if you leave, if you have left your financial affairs in other people's hands. Mm, mm, mm. You can make career moves that will bring you a much higher income. Mm, mm, mm. You may divulge private information without realizing it today. Mm, mm, mm. Okay, here's the thing, fish, loose lips sink ships, right? So be careful what you're saying today. Be careful about the information that you let out today because you don't, you don't need that, that you don't need that information out. In the meantime, you can make career moves that will bring you a much higher income. What are those? You know what I mean? Go back, look at your resume, dust it off, it's time for you to make some moves, right? And losses are likely if you have left your financial affairs in somebody else's hands. Alright, listen, take care of your own money. Take care of your own, you know, this is what I don't understand. I know people, I don't, this is not me, I wasn't raised this way. When it's, when it comes to paying the bills, I'm not waiting on nobody to pay my bills. I'm just not. My mother, my mother made sure that she taught us to manage your money, manage your bills. Because if you sit around and you wait, I'm not waiting for, my husband knows, all he has to do is make sure the money go in the bank, the bills get paid. He doesn't have to worry about, he, he doesn't have to worry about any of that kind of stuff. Because I manage the household finances and it's not because I wanna be bossy, it's just because I wanna make sure they get done. He works a lot, he's not thinking about that stuff when he comes home and I worry about it, I got it. I just added to my plate of other twenty, twenty-nine million things I got to do. It's okay, here's the thing, the lights ain't off. Hit, that's right, the lights are not off, the car insurance is paid, the cell phone bills are paid, we can watch cable, yes, all of that. I ain't waiting for you. Listen, I know women who don't even have a checkbook, the husband has a checkbook. Not, not gonna happen with me. It's not, it's not gonna, unless I'm, unless I'm incapacitated and I can't help it. My husband don't need to write a check on my behalf. He can write his own check for himself if he wants to and if he don't wanna write it, I'll write it for him. But I don't need him to write my check, I don't need him to pay the bills, I just need him to make sure the money's in the bank. And we, 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 we work together on that. Some women don't know how to do that, like I often, my mother didn't teach me that, y'all. I'm sorry, ladies, I get it, you want the man to be the head of the household, he handles all the bills, he pays everything. Nah, unfortunately, I didn't get taught that way. My mother taught me, you make sure, I wanna say something else, but you make sure your stuff is paid, you handle the bills. And I don't mind, because I put everything on automatic debit. I know that, I was at, I was in a meeting recently and, um, I was telling somebody about, um, Vimea Pro, right? And I was like, yes, annual program, I said, comes out of my account every December the twelfth. The, the person said, oh my God, you know the date? Yes, I know the date, because I have a list of all the stuff that comes out of my accounts with a date next to them. So I'll make sure that the funds are allocated the way they're supposed to. Yes, I have a list, I, I do a new list every year at the beginning of the year, because I cross off stuff, I get rid of stuff and I have a list. And so that person, that person's like, oh my God, you know the date? Yes, I know the date. How could I not, and how can I pay the bills if I don't know the date? So anyway, I said all that to say, handle your money, handle your money, fish, handle your bills, you pay your bills. I, he didn't pay, he ain't gotta pay mine, I'm, I'm gonna make sure the bills get paid. He, I don't know why he don't do this, I don't need to know why, because I'm, I'm gonna make sure it, it gets handled. And that's just me, but there are some women who feel like the husband's supposed to take care of the household. Yeah, I mean, yeah, go to work, I mean, drop the money in the bank, but I don't, I need, especially if you're busy, like if he's busy, you know, he's working, you pay, pay the bills. I don't know, I never got that part, like I'm just not that person. But my mom didn't teach me like that. And you know, she was a single parent for a long time, so I wasn't married for a long time. I wasn't married for a long time, so I was a single parent as well. I was a single parent to my daughter was, what was she, twelve? She was twelve. So I had to know how to do that stuff myself, you know. Not only that, I don't think I ever would have. I don't think, I don't think my husband, my husband would ever have had my bankbook, you know, paying bills. I just don't think he would. But I know people. You know, who do, who do that. The husband carried a checkbook, he write out all the checks for the bills and shit. Stuff don't, I was about to say something. But if stuff don't get paid, it's his fault, and then you mad, like, you pay the bills. Like, get the checkbook and pay the bills. I'm just saying. I, I don't understand that mindset. But anyway. I do know folks like that. Some of my love dearly. The husband is, is the money manager. Yeah, yeah. All right, that's all the horoscopes I got for you today. I'll be back again tomorrow at ten AM to bring you more of the horoscopes brought to you by noted as Sergeant Mike Athos. Now let's get on with some news that you can use. So President Joe Biden will advocate for a three-month halt on collecting the eighteen cents. Uh, eighteen cents a gallon federal gas ta- tax, leading his support to uh. Leading his support to a plan that US Senator Raphael Warnock and others first proposed in February. Any suspension of the gas tax um, which also adds twenty-four cents per gallon to diesel prices must be approved by Congress. While the Republicans have criticized Biden for not doing more to respond to the high cost of fuel prices, it is unclear if there are enough votes. If there are enough votes um in either chamber to support the gas tax holiday. So they, he's trying to make sure. Because gas is high right now. Someone was saying, my husband was saying that his friend said he, it took a hundred and twenty dollars to fill up his gas tank. I was like, oh, my god. Like, a hundred and twenty dollars, like, yeah, people telling me. And you know what's crazy is, I said to him, is it a big, is it a big SUV? He's like, nah, I don't think, and I was like, why does it cost so much? He said, well, he's in Jersey. The gas is around five dollars a gallon. And he has to use premium. I'm like, oh, so I got a, I got a Jeep Cherokee that I just got fixed, y'all. Like, I went and got everything fixed that I could think about. And uh, I'm, I spent the forty dollars, when I first got that truck, it was twenty-five dollars. I was ecstatic. I had, I love Jeeps, though. I was ecstatic that it was twenty, because I had expedition before that. So right now. If I had my expedition, I'd be spending about eighty dollars a gallon, eighty dollars to fill my truck up. But I have a Jeep Patriot. And I spend forty. I don't even think I put forty in there yet, because I, I don't drive all that much, so um. It never goes down to the point where I have to spend forty. I think the most I've spent so far is probably like thirty-one. You know, but the gas prices keep going up, so I get it. So anyway, conservatives, even some Democrats. Democrats have argued that the gas tax holidays do a little to combat the gas prices, which currently, who was around, oh, lord, near five dollars. Yep, five dollars a gallon. So for people who have them expensive cars, a Mercedes Benz, like, my daughter got a Benz, my brother got a Benz. And um she was, we went, we went, we went to a retreat, and the gas wasn't as high as it was, and so. We had to get gas, and she came back, she's like, oh, my god. I was like, what? She said it was. I gave her forty dollars, because I'm thinking that's all it's gonna take to fill the car. It was like sixty-four dollars. I was like, ah, that's because she has to use premium. In her car. So there's my brother. They have to use premium gas and gas, gas. So premium is probably at five dollars. Four ninety-nine, right at, like, knock the one cent down. So anyway, the gas holiday um has to go, get passed, and so we'll see. If that helps with the gas bills at all, the gas prices, because right now they are a little bit up there, baby. They are really up there. Okay, so you know, yesterday was runoff day here in Gwinnett County, so we had a lot of folks in the runoff, you know. Because popcorn and politics is on vacation, I gotta give y'all politics, some politics, some politics here on the show. Normally, I try not to. I try to hold it for good, for popcorn and politics. But Derek and I are on vacation right now, so I gotta talk about a little bit of the politics here, so. State Representative Bean, uh Bean Nguyen is the winner in the twenty-twenty-two Georgia Democratic runoff primary election for the Secretary of State. According to um a projection from NBC News. Two Democrats on the ballots. Tuesday, for Secretary of State was, uh, were new, uh, Nguyen, who was leading with seventy-seven points, twenty-seven percent of the points by. By eight-thirty last night. Um, and former Representative Dee Hawkins Hagler. Hagler with twenty-two, twenty-two point seven-three percent. Nguyen will also face GOP incumbent Brad Raffensperger in November. So she's gotta run against Brad Raffens, uh, Raffensperger. Who is now the sitting um, the sitting, uh, 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 gosh, what am I trying to say? I'm just out of it. The Secretary of State. Yeah, so he, he's a sitting one, so she's gonna, she's, she's gonna run against him in November. So. Listen, Derek and I will be back in, in August. We on vacation right now from popcorn and politics, but we're gonna be back in August. Because we gonna have a lot to talk about. We got the governor's race, we got the Secretary of State race. We got the state senate race, the congress race, we got a lot of races. So we would definitely be back um. In August to talk more about pop, politics on popcorn and politics. Right now, Bean Nguyen is the, is the Democratic. Uh, nominee that's gonna be running against Raffensperger in November. All right, I'm gonna go to a song, and then I'm gonna come back and give you some more of some political uh. Runoffs, election uh wins. All right, stay tuned, I'll be right back. Welcome back, welcome back. It's your girl, Audrey Bell Kearney, bringing you the daily rundown about what's going on in and around Gwinnett County. And yes, we're talking politics today, y'all, because the runoff was yesterday, and so it's a lot that I wanted, well, not a lot, I had some, some, some um notes. Of results that I wanted to just run by you and let you know what, what was going on, just in case you missed it. So. Um, Atlanta Attorney Charlie Bailey has won the Democratic runoff election for Lieutenant Governor. Yep, yep. So uh, he had like ninety percent of the votes last night, Tuesday night, so he is gonna be the candidate running against. Republican candidate Burt Jones come November. Um, he pulled it off. It was an upset defeat, you know, he, that, he, he ran against Kwanzaa Hall. And that who's a longtime polit- politician who served the last month of US Representative John Lewis term. After the Congressman and Civil Rights Leader had passed away in twenty-twenty. So he pulled it off, and now he's the, he's a nominee to, nominee to run against um Burt Jones. The Republican candidate running in November. This is gonna be an interesting election session coming up. It's gonna be interesting. You know, we already know the biggie over there with, you know, the governor's race. Anyway, Janet Lawson Robinson on Tuesday won the Democratic nomination for Georgia Insurance and Safety Fire Commissioner. Giving her a second shot at the post she lost narrowly four years ago. Uh, Lawson Robinson defeated fellow insurance agent, uh, Raphael Baker in the primary runoff. She will face Republican incumbent John King in November. Uh, King is a former Durville Police Chief and a Major General in the US um National Guard. Is the first Latino to hold statewide office in Georgia. He was nominated, he was named to the post by Brian Kemp. After he, uh, after the predecessor Jim Beck, who, who Jim Beck, who was indicted on charges of swindling money. Yeah, yeah, he was indicted. So they said they gotta, they gotta fix that. Right now, Beck is serving seven years and three months in the federal prison after being convicted last year. So King stepped in on his behalf. He was appointed by Governor Kemp. And now he's gonna be running against Ms. Lawson Robinson in December. She lost um the race when she lost it last time. By uh, three percentage points. So we're gonna see what's gonna happen this go around. Hey, listen, voters are getting out. They got, they wanna see some changes, y'all. They's like, we got to see some changes going on here. Things need to change. But that's what, that's how you do it. You go to the polls and you vote. You go to the polls and you, listen, you, you make your, you make your voice heard. You know what I'm saying? That's how you get stuff done. I wanna say something else, but I won't, because this is a family show. But that's how you get stuff done. All right, so Gwinnett, Georgia Gwinnett College was selected. Yeah, Georgia Gwinnett doing its thing, baby. Was selected to receive the Georgia Association of Colleges and Employers in Oral Diversity and Inclusive, Includes, Includes of Excellence Award. The award recognized the efforts of a university career services office or employer member. GGC received the award for its program, Guess Who's Coming to Dinner. That's cute. Who thought of that? That's really cute. That's really cute. A conversation on diversity in the workplace. The event drew GGC students, faculty, staff, participant. Who had, uh, who heard from a panel of representatives from the government and private sectors. Over dinner. Event, event panelists discussed their respective experiences and provided advice in navigating through diversity issues in the workplace. Sherri Goodman, Acting Director of GGC's Career Development and Advising Center, said that the Guess Who's Coming to Dinner event allowed participants to share their own experiences. In what she called a safe space. So they got that award. Kudos to you guys for, for, for taking on the challenge of talking about these things. It's important. I'm, I'm telling y'all, this is what I believe in, everything in me. When we talk about our issues, we can make them better. It's when we stay in our houses and we talk amongst ourselves and we all speak the same language that it's a problem. If we talk to each other and learn from each other and explore each other's cultures and, and, and each other's. Um, communities, we learn better. You know what I'm saying? But that's not what we normally do. That's not what we do. We sit in our houses and we talk amongst ourselves about things that affect the community, our children, our neighborhoods. And then you expect things to change. It will not change that way. They're not gonna change because you're not talking to the people that's gonna help change. You're talking to the people. That have the same beliefs as you are, that are not making the world a better place. That's all I'm saying. So the fact that GGC has said, you know what, we're gonna take, listen, we're gonna use Guess Who's Coming to Dinner. As a way for us to um get the conversation going. So I think it's great. Goodness said that GGC will host another Guess Who's Coming to Dinner event in twenty-twenty-three, so that's gonna be another event. If you wanna be a part of them, I'm sure you can reach out to the. College for more information on how to take part in that, especially if you gotta, uh, uh. If you got something that you wanna bring to the table to help people understand. I think understanding different cultures and different people makes us great. And, no, no, don't get me wrong. I know that there is more of us who are alike than not. But the people that are, are different, they are so different today, they could almost cause divide amongst the ones of us who aren't. All right, so the city of Duluth, we're bringing the glitz and glam of Vegas Strip to downtown Duluth. Yes, this coming Saturday, save your coins. Yes, June twenty-fifth, six PM to nine PM, they're gonna bring on the glitz and glam from Vegas. Join us for an evening. Of Cirque Style dancers, celebrity impersonators, performances, magi- magicians, fleece, free slot machines and more. Oh, guys, see, I can't be playing no free slot machines. I need to play the real thing. I'm just saying. Somebody's saying, why you need to play the real, because I need to play the real thing. Like, I like playing slot machines. Listen, don't, don't judge me. It's, it's the chase, right? It's the chase. It's like playing games. Like, that's what I like about it. Anyway, that's gonna be this coming Saturday. Also, if you wanna get out Friday night at Duluth, downtown Duluth food truck lineup. They got the Dot Bowl, Five Finger Philly, Sophisticated, the Cheesy Truck, the Patty Wagon, that's cute, the Patty Wagon. I like Five Finger Philly, too. Juke and Job Creamery, Simply Done Doughnuts, Sugar Valley Kettle Corn and Funnycake Guys. They're gonna be downtown. Duluth on um Friday from six to nine. So put these things on your calendar so you don't have to miss them. You know, it's, it's the time of the year where stuff goes on here. We have a lot going on in Gwinnett County. If you don't know how to have fun in Gwinnett County, especially during the summertime, you are just a boring person. That's all. So twenty-fifth. Go downtown Duluth, twenty-fourth Food Truck, Food Truck Alley. And then on the twenty-fifth, you got the Vegas Glit- Glitz and Glam all going down in, in Duluth. So listen, you don't have to live in Duluth to enjoy. Go visit. Leave, listen, leave your side of town for a change. Go visit somebody else's side of town. You know what I'm saying? All right, so listen, the Greater East Side Chamber of Commerce is having an event this coming Tuesday. Um, at eleven-thirty, it's the Business Breakfast Connect, Br- Business Brunch Connection um event. So they get together the fourth Tuesday of every month, that we have a business brunch, so we can do networking and training. I'll be the speaker this coming Tuesday because I'm excited. Y'all know I've been talking about Amazon forever. Um, not forever, but for the last week, because I, I am an Amazon um influencer. And don't get it twisted, the influencer part is not the part. The platform is the part that I'm excited about. The title of influencer, that's not it. That's not what makes me excited. What makes me excited is being on the Amazon platform. And I can livestream. That's what makes me excited. So I know some of you go, oh, my god, she's excited to be an influencer. No. I'm excited that I can get on Amazon and livestream. That's what excites me. Not the title of being an influencer. That doesn't excite me. Um, being able to be, able to get on Amazon, talk to authors and entrepreneurs and community leaders and nonprofit leaders and. Uh, ministry leaders, all these people. And put them on a platform where thousands of people are just hanging out and ready to buy something. That's exciting. So that's why I'm excited about the Amazon project. So on Tuesday at eleven-thirty, I will be talking about um. How to make money on Amazon, because there are so many ways. And a lot of times, people get it confused. Even my daughter got it confused. I was telling her, like, lady, you should. You should try to be a, a, a Amazon influencer, because she has way more TikTok and Instagram followers than I do, so I, and she does way more. On those platforms than I do. So if I can become an influencer, I know she can become an influencer, uh, because she does way, way more. And so um. I said to her, you should apply. And she just kinda blew me off. And I'm like, why wouldn't she apply to this? So this morning, we were having a conversation, and she was like, well, it doesn't get that, it didn't get good reviews. And I was like, which one? She's like, what you mean? I said, it's like five or six different programs. She goes, oh, I think it was, so I went through all the programs, and she was like, yeah, I think it's that one. I said, yeah, it's not, that's not the one I'm talking about. So there are so many opportunities for you to, Amazon, so I know a lot of people hate Amazon. But here's what I'm gonna say about Amazon. Amazon gives up a lot of opportunities, right? A lot of them. And um. If you don't understand them, you could just like look at them and say, that's not for me. Just like she did. She's like, yeah, that's not for me. She thought I was excited because. You know, I was gonna have an Amazon store, and that was it. I'm like, no, I'm not excited about, about that. I'm excited because I get to livestream on Amazon. You know, so when you're making TikTok videos and people, a million people following you, you're not making money. But if you go on Amazon and a mil- million people follow you and they click in that shopping cart, you make money. And so I had to explain her the different, the different programs that are on the Amazon, so I'm gonna go into depth on that on Tuesday. Um, if you want to attend that event, go to mygecc.org. And um, you can register to, to, to attend that event. It's a brunch. We have great food, great networking, and hopefully the information that I'm gonna share is gonna help you decide. How to incorporate Amazon into your business, whether it be a store, whether it be a service, because, because Amazon offers a lot, y'all. A lot, a lot of opportunities for you guys. You got Amazon Fire TV, you got Alexa, you got in-app purchases. It's just so many ways to make money. Now, let me just say this, they're not easy, simple ways, but some of them are, you know, and they're gonna require you to do work. So. Um, I'm gonna be talking about that on Tuesday. So go to mygecc.org. Register, register for the workshop, so you can learn all the different ways that you can earn some money, even if it's a side hustle. People are talking about they wanna side hustle. I'm gonna be talking about, about five or six of them. So make sure to come out and so, uh, uh, check it out and um, get the information. Take the information, decide which way you wanna go. If you decide to go anywhere at all, at least you'll have the information. So again, that's mygecc.org. It's the brunch coming up this coming Tuesday. It's gonna be at the Hampton Inn over in Snellville on Sinek Highway. Um, so go ahead, register today, all right? Um, so go ahead, register today, alright? Alright, I'm going to my last song, then I'm gonna come back and give you my word of inspiration for the day before I close it out, so stay tuned. Welcome back, welcome back. So listen, guys, that's all I got for you today, but before I go, I wanna give you my word of inspiration, and here goes. It says, the only time you fail is when you fall down and stay down. Ooh, let me say that again. The only time you fail is when you fall down and stay down. Steven Richards said that, and he was right. Listen. When you fall down, you gotta get back up. You gotta dust yourself off and get back up. Do you know how many times I fell down? You know how many times I fell down this week? Yes, and it, and it's only Wednesday. You gotta, listen, you have to pick yourself back up and get back going. Get back on the hot horse and start again. It's not, listen, failure is not an option. It's, it's not a, it's, it's an opportunity. It's an opportunity for you to learn. Yes, you gonna fail. You gonna fall down, you gonna hit your face on the pavement, but you gotta get up. You gotta get up. If you can get up, if you can look up, Les Brown said, you can get up. You have got to get up. Brush yourself off. And if you are limping, lean on somebody for a second, just till you get your balance again, but just get up and get going again. Yes, you may be a little bit slower than you want it to be, cause that's one of our problems. We are very impatient. We want everything to happen right now. It's not gonna happen when you want it. It's gonna happen in God's timing, but if you're not doing anything, God's timing is not gonna help you. So you gotta get up, get going again. Even if you have to start over, I used to call myself the queen of starting over, because I used to start over so much, I was exhausting myself. But here's the thing, I didn't quit. Now I'm in my happy place. I'm talking to you four days a week. I'm about to go talk to some women in thirty minutes about investing. I'm gonna go live tonight on Amazon and talk about my book club. I'm like, I'm in my happy place right now, but if I had stopped, I would never have gotten to my happy place. I'm in my happy place. But I didn't get here because I didn't fall. I got here because I didn't stay down when I failed. So all I got for you today. Could've been anywhere in the world, but you spent the last one hour with me, and I love and appreciate you for that. Listen, if you missed any episodes of this show, go, go to goodmorninggwinnett.com to listen to past episodes there. Also, be sure to download the app from the App Store. Whether you have an Android phone or Apple phone, there's a Good Morning Gwinnett app for that phone. Or you gotta just go to your, to your App Store and look for Good Morning Gwinnett, and you will find the yellow and purple app there. If you are looking to start your own podcast, go to Podcast University. I have a bootcamp coming up. I have a one- oh, I got a, I got a solo class coming up, and I have an Alexa class. So if you have a, you have a podcast already and you wanna leverage Amazon for your benefits. Listen, go to podcastuniversitytraining, podcastuniversitytraining. If you want to be on a podcast, but you don't wanna produce the podcast, you just wanna show up. Go to Noise Podcast Network, Noise Podcast Network. There is a program there with your name on it. Pick one, and we'll help you get on the air, alright? Alright, I'll be back again tomorrow at ten AM. Listen, you guys stay safe out there, and again, thank you so much for listening and always listening to me ramble on and on, cause I love you guys for that. Um, until next time, I'll be back again tomorrow at ten AM, God willing, and until next time, make it a great day, my friends. Bye now.
You've been listening to Good Morning Gwinnett. Make sure to tune in Monday through Thursday at ten AM Eastern Time to find out what's happening around Gwinnett. If you liked this episode, subscribe now and share with your friends. To learn more about Noise Media Network, visit noisemedia.us.